This is Ms. Minnick's agenda. Request that the common council approve the city chairman to adjust the general fund budget by an increase of $3,954.07 for South Acres Park to recognize the GEICO reimbursement for the auto accident damage to the fence. I guess somebody ran into it.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any questions about that item?
Rochelle, can you hear us?
I can.
Good. Okay. That's amazing.
You guys, each one of you, you used to sound like you were underwater and each one of you is crystal clear.
Oh, that's awesome.
I can hear every word that every person said.
Good.
I take back all those mean things.
Okay, going to C. An approval for the building inspector to refund $20 for Barbara Gildman for building permits due to the hedge compliance.
Too bad we couldn't reimburse her about $2,000. She spent a lot more than that.
Any other questions, issues with that?
No.
C. MLD writing off unpaid bills for $8,254.19 and the write-off is 0.77%. Did this go to him? I was just wondering if we had a...
That chart is good that he's been providing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then D. Approving a renewal of the contract with PHA for supplemental police services for a Plattsburgh police officer 2016 to 2017. Any questions, issues with that? And E. Street closures for the Battle of Plattsburgh. Those are pretty cool banners out there. Did we have those last year?
They're brand new.
They're very cool. I like them.
Good to see them.
What is brand new?
There are banners, Battle of Plattsburgh banners hanging outside of City Hall.
I'll take a picture and text it to you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions about the street closures? And F. Approving city Chamberlain to increase the 2016 sewer fund for WPCP by 82,000 for unbudgeted costs. Does anybody have any questions for John on that or Richard?
Yeah. See the list.
Did you have a question, Rochelle?
No. I'm just trying to look at the backup as I go.
Okay. G. Approval of city Chamberlain to transfer $103,004 between police department budget items and increase the use of the general fund, fund balance to cover underbudgeted items related to employee separation costs, contract services, vehicle repairs, and so forth. And that increases the general fund budgeted appropriations by 97 to 94. We did have emails with that explaining. Did anybody have any further questions or need for clarification? Okay.
No, but this does bring up though, as it affects the fund balance exactly or whatever, it brings to mind the new policy that we passed, you know, having different, the different levels of lower 5% to upper 10%. And I've been thinking for a while that I'd like us to revisit that and develop a plan of action. And I know that's probably in your mind and everybody's mind, but I just kind of pinned that down.
Yeah, I definitely think so. Once the mayor brings the council his budget, then we can, and perhaps even preliminarily, we can start talking about what we have as stipulated items in the current budget policy. So we can look at that and to see, you know, what, where we were expecting the unexpected, so to speak, on that.
When do you expect the results of the financial review boards?
I don't know if the mayor has heard anything yet. That's a question for him to address. I haven't heard anything about what they're doing, so I think they're still probably crunching and thinking about it.
All right. Thank you.
And then H. Resolution for us to approve revision of a capital project, H5110.50, street resurfacing for $170,000 for Fort Brown Drive that's covered by CHIPS funding. Questions?
Yeah. Kevin? What exactly, could you just explain to me if Kevin's, is Kevin there?
He is here.
Yes.
Okay. Hi, Kevin. Could you explain to me the nature of the problem on Fort Brown Drive? If I got back out ground information about it, I do apologize, but...
Sure, I'd be happy to. So Fort Brown Drive, pavement condition is fair to poor, but the foundation is reasonably good, so...
Hey, Kevin. Kevin, I think she can't hear you very well.
Can you hear me?
Do you want to come up here? Can you hear him?
Yeah.
That'd be great. I can see him too. For the...
Oh, that microphone.
Oh, yeah.
That's perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
My name's Kevin and sometimes it feels like I look downstairs. So Fort Brown Drive was identified for rehabilitation so that we can extend the useful life before it has a total foundation failure and we get involved with the more expensive reconstruction. So we initially intended to do a milling and overlay last year. The curb was in such terrible condition that it very quickly became clear that it really needed to be fixed. So we backed up a step, we reassessed, and we're, now we're, we have a little change in plan so that the scope involves not just an overlay, but also the curb and also some drainage infrastructure improvements.
How old is that road?
Uh, let's see, I'm not sure. I don't have my pavement condition in front of me. I'd say it's probably 20 something to 30 years old.
Yeah, yeah. I should have been mailed it to you. I'm sorry to bring it up like that, but I'm just, I'm kind of trying to look at the relative, you know, what I see as I go along in my travels, that mine in the town and just kind of making my own evaluation of the relative condition. So, I think, I really appreciate you explaining it.
Yeah. Well, I guess one other comment, if I may, is, you know, keep in mind that it's, you know, it's sort of a two-pronged task, so we don't want to wait until it gets so bad that we have to rebuild it like Lorraine, for example, where we're, we have to pay something in the order of $120, sometimes up to $200 a square yard to repair it. But if we can get it at the state of rehabilitation, then we can do, we can extend the useful life for around $12, $15, maybe $20 a square yard compared to 200. So we're, you know, sometimes you say, well, why are we doing this road? It's not as bad as that road. Well, we don't both. We're doing rehabilitation and extending the useful life and we're doing reconstruction for the worst of the worst.
All right. Thank you.
Was resurfaced in 1998.
Thank you.
I have a question. Was that road there when, when the airbase was there?
Yes.
So that road already existed when the property was developed?
Yes.
And was there any discussion, do you recall redoing the road at that point or was it done at that point?
I think the short answer to your question is no. That, the Fort Brown subdivision was approved just immediately before I got here in 2002. And if you notice, there's a lot of utility cuts. All of those new home housing, they all have their own utility cut, water and sewer. And there's a lot of that. Technically, the pavement condition rating method is not supposed to take into account the utility cuts because it's supposed to be observing the overall foundation of the pavement section. But practically speaking, you know, when you drive down the road, there's a lot of utility cuts and it's a lot of bumpity bump. And by the way, and I do a sort of hybrid scoring that actually does factor in on a scale of one to three, we can factor for the roughness in addition to the standard one through 10 method. So we do kind of recognize that as well as, of course, the other way factors traffic volume. So when you get the high, you know, the high-volume roads, the imperials, the Route 9s and the Route 3s, those of course score higher too based on... But yeah, you can see a lot of utility cuts, so it's a pretty rough route.
I just wondered if maybe this was another case of a, of a road or infrastructure that we inherited that may not have been up to speed when we took it over.
Yeah, I would say it's probably pretty accurate. It probably, and also it wasn't asked of the developer to do any improvements to it. They were allowed to develop without any improvements. You know, it's, it's kind of unique though when you're doing redevelopment of those Air Force neighborhoods. You know, if that was your typical subdivision development, like a Jerry Drive or what have you, the developers typically building that road, building that infrastructure, turning it over to the city.
Right.
Air Force transfer lands, a little different, the infrastructure's there, but it often needs work and how, you know, you're trying to promote development, but at the same time upkeep, infrastructure, who's going to go to visit?
Would we have been within our rights to ask the developer at the time it was developed to redo the road?
Arguably, I think really the redevelopment of class of the airbase is a little bit different and doesn't fit neatly into our subdivision code, which is really geared toward the new development, you know, areas. So depending how, you know, you read and interpret that, you could arguably ask them to do some improvements, but it's, like I said, it doesn't fit quite perfectly hand and glove into our subdivision code, which is the more classical type of subdivision that you would think of.
Right. We just had some bad experiences there on the, on the airbase, as you know, and maybe we could learn from those experiences. However, it's hard to imagine much else is going to happen there that would be similar, so...
At this point, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin.
Want me to keep going?
Yeah, please.
Okay. Item I. Council is being asked to approve Chamberlain's revision of capital project H5110.58, the 2016 Serenac River Trail, for a demolition cost of $200,000 for the Serenac Street Bridge, and that's covered by the general fund. Does any, Mike?
We should ask Kevin to stay at the microphone. But that's okay. I just wanted to say that I am very, very happy to see this progressing. Also very happy to see the bridge, the bridge being torn down and replaced. And I think the same company that's doing that is also doing the remediation work there, aren't they? So that's, that's kind of convenient.
That is correct.
Yeah. Couldn't be happier about that, Kevin, and the people in my neighborhood are going to be happy also when they see that. Thank you very much for staying with it and I know it's been touching at times.
A little tricky trying to get our work to coincide with Thursday, we're getting a quite favorable price and we're leaving us a lot of permitting burdens that we would otherwise be subject to. And I think that we'll all be even happier when we get that engagement for it next year.
Yeah, $177,000 seems like a pretty good deal to lose.
And we give a very good price. I mean, if we had to do this on our own, we'd be looking at easily nine times that, possibly ten times that.
Wow. Okay. Thank you.
Before we continue, Brian, are we streaming now? Did you want to shut that off?
I can.
I thought it was in here.
I'm waiting for the actual needing to do it, but...
Okay. All right. Okay. Item J. Near and dear to my heart. Council is being asked to approve city Chamberlain to revise capital project H5110.57, street resurfacing for $292,000 for Lorraine Street, covered by the general fund for $192,000 and the water fund by $100,000. Does anybody have any questions or issues?
We're not doing this till next year, right?
No, it makes sense to do it next year rather than tear it up and leave it torn up all winter. And we think we'll get a better price if we bid it over the offseason rather than...
This amount could change.
I don't think they shouldn't.
Right.
I mean, it's, maybe it'll go down.
That's what I'm wondering.
I'm hoping.
Yeah. Okay. And it doesn't, it makes sense to do it now rather than next year?
What?
To allocate this money?
Establish poli, yes, I think so. That way, that way we can, you know, get a bid out and make an award early in the season.
May I answer my question?
Mike, you're patching right now, aren't you?
Yes.
Thank you. And item K. Resolution to approve engineering contract 2016-067, 2016 street paving Fort Brown and Sandra, and awarded to the Love Brothers for the price of $455,312.316. Any questions?
I do. That's involving curving repair as well?
Yes.
Repair, replacement, or what's the word?
Repair.
Of all?
All.
All, okay. No sidewalk?
No sidewalk.
And L. Resolution to approve engineering contract 2016-10, Serenac Street Bridge superstructure removal, awarded to Sevenson Environmental Services for a price of $177,000. And the last. Travel request. 8A. To approve two police department employees to attend 2016 IMPACT training conference from September 12th to the 14th in Saratoga this year. Total cost is $564 and will be expensed out of asset seizure. Questions? Any resolutions for initial consideration tonight? New business? Okay. We have...
Take about a 10-minute break and start the formal meeting.
We have 11 minutes.
Okay. 11.
11. Not 10.
I'm not going to turn off the screen.
That's fine.
Okay.
This is cold as time. Again, this is sick.
It wasn't.
No. It was amazing how...
Yeah, the seasons.
I seen where it is.
The seasons, the season going. It really tells you a lot. It tells you a lot. Like the city's...
No, I have to relax. I'm a little...
Maybe it's been a long pause. 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 So, it affects the... Where's the test result? It's one of those, that could be the issue. Something to be... It is pretty bad. Yeah, it is. But you know, it's, it's the dollar. And, uh...
I told him, he had his microphone, he didn't have a junkyard mic. Okay, yeah. So he doesn't have to jump. No. And it comes out of this stuff. He likes to jump. Well, it does have to, right? And he's, he's going to listen to this now and I'm going to say that he likes to jump.
Oh, it's cheap. Oh. I still believe there's... I guess the kids...
Oh, yeah. You can go.
One of the kids I grew up with, their parents allowed them to go and provide them. But back then, they had $30. They'd go. They'd go do it pretty cheap. I used to just steal my father's stuff.
Kill it off. I was pissed. So we have to communicate mostly. Yeah. Yeah, just like...
Sorry to do that to you, by the way.
Yeah.
I'm sorry to do that to you.
It's no big deal.
It wasn't a heavy...
No, it wasn't. I forgot what you were doing, so I just, what you did, so I just... I was excited.
What you doing? Okay. Yeah, yeah. I just wanted to make sure. I didn't even think about it. Clear. Yeah, I know. I couldn't be happier. Or hasn't been said before. Yeah. But it is only quite funny if someone... That's too much. That's too much. I know. So, I don't think I was that much of a... I'm going to be on the microphone.
Nobody said anything.
At the end, I thought it was... Did it skip one or did you... Yeah, so, yeah. But now I have to break the phone. I learned. It's a dark one. It's a dark one.
I'm going to bring that down too.
I know. Just to have you go, what do you mean? Yeah. That's why this shouldn't be here. Yeah, this is... They are pretty good about this one. Yeah. Rochelle. Morning. Good, yeah, yeah. What's the lead? Oh, did you ever come? I'll give you 40 seconds. The city insignia. You asked me about that, didn't you?
I did.
That was on stage.
Not on, unless, yeah, I just wanted to say...
Yeah. Maybe Beth can pick her up.
What?
Do you ever like to have some actual city letterhead?
Oh. Well, what I can do, if you want it, I can just... That's what we're thinking. That's what he and everybody else, they just changed all that.
Okay.
Here you go. Yeah.
It would help if we could, if we could hear all the way. I mean, I understand where it came from, but I don't have any...
I'm really good. Yeah. I had to sort it out. No, no, I appreciate it because I'm online. I think you're going to go print out. All ends, get some all six. Has your project going?
Good. It's still snowing.
Yeah, there's a contingency.
So, this is almost, what's this called, like 2,000?
Oh, that's like a backup.
It's a long... So, I think about 24,000. Well, 24,002. You're...
You're changing each other.
That's what it is. Because if you put that to 12...
Rochelle, you're taking us on a ride.
That's so true. Hey, Brian. Hey, Brian. I know. Yeah. I got it. What's that? Good. Rochelle, just, just down.
What is that? It's a painting. The castle.
Hi, hey. I'm pretty driven, man.
Yeah, you are.
I noticed.
That is the reaction.
Nice, nice picture. Thank you, Josh.
No problem. We were just looking at the artwork behind you.
Yes.
No. It's all...
Is that a self-portrait?
You know him, no chance.
I don't know her.
Okay, I can stay right here.
Okay. So are we ready? Please rise and join me in the presence of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I call a meeting to order. Volco.
Mayor Collins?
Here.
Councilor Armstrong?
Here.
Councilor Kelly?
Here.
Councilor Dowdell?
Here.
Councilor O'Connell?
Here.
Councilor Casper?
Here.
Resolve that amidst of the regular meeting of the common council held on August 11th, 2016, are approved and placed on file among the public records of the city clerk's office.
Moved by Councilor Dowdell, second by Councilor Casper. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Resolve that the payrolls of the various departments of the city of Plattsburgh for the weeks ending August 17th, 2016, in the amount of $490,219.66. And August 24th, 2016, in the amount of $107,311.97 are authorized and allowed and the mayor and the city clerk are hereby empowered and directed to sign warrants drawn on the city Chamberlain for the payment thereof.
Moved by Councilor Casper, second by Councilor Kelly. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Carry.
Resolve that the reports as listed are hereby ordered received and placed on file among the public records of the city of Plattsburgh.
I know. Just to have you go, what do you mean? Yeah, that's why this shouldn't be here. See, they are pretty good about this kind of sound. You asked me about that, didn't you?
I did.
That was on stage.
Not on, unless, yeah, I just wanted to say.
I thought. Maybe Beth would pick her up. Do you ever like to have some actual city letterhead?
Well, what I can do is if you want it, I can just. That's what we're thinking. Here you go.
It would help if we could, if we could hear along the way. I mean, I understand where it came from, but.
Good. Don't fire up last night.
That's good.
That's hilarious. I had to sort of that. No, no, I appreciate it, because. I think he's going to go print out. All ends, get some all seconds. Has your, has your project going?
Good. It's, it's not easy.
Yeah, then there's a contingency.
So. This is almost, what's this called, two thousand?
Oh, that's like a backup.
So I think about twenty-four thousand, well, two thousand and twenty-two. You will or at least change each other. That's what it is, because if you put that to twelve. Rochelle, you're taking us on a ride. That's so true. Hey Brian.
What is that?
It's a painting. The castle.
Hi, hey. I'm pretty driven, man.
Yeah, you are.
I noticed.
Nice, nice picture, thank you, Josh.
No problem. We were just looking at the, the artwork behind you.
Yes.
Yeah.
Is that a self-portrait?
You know him, no chance.
I don't know her.
Okay, stay right here.
Okay. So are we ready? Please rise and join me in the presence of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I call a meeting to order. Roll call.
Mayor Collins?
Here.
Councilor Armstrong?
Here.
Councilor Kelly?
Here.
Councilor Dowdell?
Here.
Councilor O'Connell?
Here.
Councilor Casper?
Here.
Councilor Kretzer?
Here.
Resolved that the minutes of the regular meeting of the common council held on August eleventh, two thousand sixteen are approved and placed on file among the public records of the city clerk's office.
Moved by Councilor Dowdell, second by Councilor Casper, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolved that the payrolls of the various departments of the city of Plattsburgh for the week ending August seventeenth, two thousand sixteen, in the amount of four hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and sixty-six cents, and August twenty-fourth, two thousand sixteen, in the amount of one hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-seven cents, are authorized and allowed, and the mayor and the city clerk are hereby empowered and directed to sign warrants drawn on the city chamberlain for the payment thereof.
Moved by Councilor Casper, second by Councilor Kelly. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Resolved that the reports as listed are hereby ordered received and placed on file among the public records of the city clerk's office.
Moved by Councilor Kretzer, second by Councilor O'Connell. Discussion. I'd like to add that I did share a, a report that is hot off the presses from this afternoon and didn't appear on this agenda. The copy is available to the public. We had our first meeting with the downtown revitalization state team, and Rochelle, I'm sorry that I haven't sent it to you yet, but I'll get it to you as soon as the meeting's over with. My apologies. Basically, it's a summation of the, of the first contact call. There's a little bit of information about the process that's ahead of us. The first meeting of the, the steering committee for the downtown initiative is set for September fifteenth. There was a substantial amount of prior work that's being incorporated into this. In fact, on the report that I gave you, if you flip it over, you'll see that there's a whole list of reports that are, that the consultants have, that our state people have, and that, obviously, we have, and really has formed the foundation of, of the DRI plan. So I wanted to get that report out to you. I apologize for not having it done sooner, but I was updating this, this frequently about a half hour ago, so my apologies. So would, would anyone allow that to be attached to the minutes of this meeting? Councilor Kelly made the motion, Councilor Kretzer agrees. On the motion to amend this report in, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, opposed? On the motion of recording the minute, of recording the reports, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Resolved that the bills allotted by the common council for the week ending August nineteenth, two thousand sixteen, in the amount of four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eighty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents, and August twenty-sixth, two thousand sixteen, in the amount of one million, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and two cents, are authorized and allowed, and the mayor and city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to sign warrants drawn on the city chamberlain for the payment thereof.
Moved by Councilor Casper, second by Councilor Dowdell. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Uh, this is a point of meeting where we invite members of the public who would like to address us to step forward and share their comments with us. We ask anyone who doesn't want to talk to go to the podium so that our counselor who is remote can hear. Would anyone?
Hi, my name is Tom Herman. I live at sixty-five Florence Jean Lane, Morrisonville. My property is bordered by the city of Plattsburgh's property, which is the property that surrounds the Mead Reservoir. Pretty new to the area, I've only lived there a little over a year now, and I have a little issue with trespassers, either cutting through my property to get to your property, or vice versa. And I called, I was referred to, I guess, Public Works, they referred me to Water Works, I guess you'd call it. I called there a couple of times, and a fellow named Mike Stellner, I believe it was, went out and looked at the problems that I brought forth to him, acknowledged the, the problems, but this has been, I don't know, a month or so ago, and no more calls, nobody's done anything. I didn't know where else to go other than here. It, it's quite a nuisance for me, I mean, I don't know, it doesn't look to me like anything was done with that property since the day that signs were put up, there's gates, I don't know how many, maybe a half a dozen or so, that some of them are falling down, some of them you can actually drive a truck around, most of them are beat down from four-wheelers. I don't know, people go hiking there, they ride horses, they pretty much recreate on your property. From what I've been told, there's not supposed to be anybody on this property, but I guess it's kind of hard to keep the public out if you don't post it or keep up with your gates or anything, so I'd just like to know if we can do something about it. You know, it's just, like I said, it's a menace for me, people cutting through my, actually knock on my door and ask me if they can cut through my property to get to your property. It's kind of a choke in a way, you know, it's just, something needs to be done about it. So I don't, I don't know, can I follow up with somebody, can, can we address this? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody, thank you. Simon Conroy is my name. Just wanted to thank all of you guys for kind of going out on a limb for us a little bit with downtown rising this year. It was a good season, we had a lot of help from Sylvia and Sandra, that was great, help from you guys, the community. We had a good fifteen hundred unique visitors that came down this summer to the thirteen events, and about half of those came to almost half of the events, so we had about fifteen hundred people that actually came to five or six of them. And we did a survey, and it turned out that, I remember I was telling you guys, the first one last year I spent a hundred dollars, and you're saying, well, geez, I don't know if everybody can spend that much, because part of what we looked at is what people were going to spend downtown afterwards. We found out that, on average, people spent throughout the whole season fifty dollars at the market and fifty dollars in the downtown, so when you multiply that by fifteen hundred people, it was a good amount of money into the city. I know at first, one of the big concerns was were we going to affect traffic, I, I don't think we really did, it went fairly well, we had a little bump with the church, but we worked that out. The park, I don't think we beat up the park too badly, we worked pretty good in keeping it clean and not having the tent impact it too much, and I think overall went pretty well, I just wanted to check with you guys if you had any concerns, and we'll be back at some point to chat with you about future plans, once we have a better idea of where we're going.
Thank you.
Excited.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Christina Coy, I live on Underwood Avenue, Ward One, which borders Ward Two. Before I speak about my concern, thank you for the downtown rising, it's nice to see something happen downtown, so thank you, I participated, and I hope it continues. So, uh, three weeks, a month ago, I contacted Mr. Kelly, because Ward Two, bordering Underwood Avenue, there's a, there is an area that the city owns that wasn't being maintained. So, Mr. Kelly did his homework, and made phone calls, and followed up, and followed up, to no avail. It seems like it was a cat and mouse kind of game we were playing with the city. So, my first concern is the city not knowing what their responsibility is. My second concern is the right hand not knowing what the left hand is doing, and shame on our city for that. So, in the end, what happened is, we were told that this area would be cleaned up, it was a very shabby, shabby job done by the landowner. But in the end, as Mr. Kelly had offered to come help clean it up to a suitable presence, I took it upon myself to go across the street and start cleaning, and with that, I see this, the building inspector, Jimmy Welch, young Jimmy Welch, came by and took some pictures shortly thereafter, and I explained my concern, and I wanted to know why the city couldn't take care of the sidewalk and the railing that has been overgrown with, with shrubbery. And I asked why, down the road a little bit, the trailer park property could be maintained, a portion of the trailer park property can be maintained by the city, but the, but Public Works did not see that area to be theirs. Mr. Welch agreed that when he was on grounds, they indeed took care of that area. So, I continue cleaning, and he leaves, and I see the city come by with a cleaning crew, and they go all the way to the end of Underwood, and they've got their weed whackers out and their lawn mowers, and they're cleaning the side of the street, yay, that's nice to see. Overdue, but it was nice to see. So, with that, I then see them doing in front of the fence again, which is not city property, so I send my husband down to take some pictures, so I have proof that the city is doing it, and one of the gentlemen said, is there a problem? His name was Mr. Richards, and my husband said, no, we're just concerned that this is done, but, oh, by the sidewalk and railing isn't being done, oh, he said, we can go do that for you, we always do that. Well, it hasn't been done this year, but anyway, um, so they continue working, and now they're cleaning another area that belongs to the trailer park. So then Scott Harris shows up, who I believe might be, might oversee grounds, and he says, what are you doing? And I said, well, I'm cleaning what you guys aren't cleaning, and he says, oh, it's a matter of fact, that's on our list to do today. So, I said, well, let me finish, because I know I'm doing a good job, and, you know, you can take the brush away, whatever, and they did, but I'm, I'm concerned, I'm concerned that Public Works doesn't even know what they own, they, they, um, snowblow the sidewalk, the city put that sidewalk in, the city put that railing in, the city owns that property. So, I'm very confused that the, the department head of Public Works doesn't know, or doesn't care to know, or doesn't, I, I really can't answer for him, but why it wasn't done, and why Mr. Kelly got the runaround and was told, not our property, we don't take care of that, and then he had to go to the building inspectors, and it was just, it was just a mess, and it didn't need to be. So, with that, I would hope that your left hand knows what your right hand is doing in the city, and I would also hope that your department heads know what their responsibilities are. But in closing, thank you, Mr. Kelly, for the legwork, because I don't know where we would have gotten, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Ken.
Mr. Mayor, may I respond?
To all of the council?
May I respond?
Uh, no problem.
I, I think it's resolved now, I think we know that that property belongs to the trailer park and not the city, and going forward, the trailer park will be responsible for maintaining it.
I would disagree too long.
This is not a, this is not, this is not a town meeting, you've made your statement, he's providing response, if you want to have a discussion about it, it doesn't happen during this meeting.
So I can go back up and make a statement?
Not at this point, no, you've been on.
After another person speaks, I can go up?
We have another section.
So, going forward, all I want to say is, going forward, I think it's resolved, and I think our department heads have gotten their, their heads together, and I think, I think it's going to be okay going forward, so. Give us a chance, at least.
Would someone else care to address us this evening?
My name is Lebron Hicks, I live at nine hours away. Mayor, members of the common council, I'm here tonight because two weeks ago, I sent each and every one of you an email pertaining to the tragedy in Vermont where a natural gas leak break in the neighborhood and several homes went up in fire. I want to thank the only two councillors that had the decency to get back to me, Mr. Dowdell and Mrs. Armstrong. All you know, as you know, we have trains and subway factory in our neighborhood. When they first came into our neighborhood, some small subway shelves came in by tractor-trailer to be finished up and sent out by rail. The trains came in and were sent out by rail. Now, everything is brought in and sent out by tractor-trailer. Why the change? On Main Mill Street and Wall Street, we have natural gas lines. The subways are put on tractor-trailers and go down Main Mill Street and turn down Wall Street, and the trains go all the way down to the end of Main Mill Street to South Catherine. The reason being, the subways are usually thirty-two foot long, and the trains are forty-eight. Can you imagine the weight of one of these tractor-trailers empty, let alone with a thirty-two or forty-eight foot vehicle on top of it? Especially the gas lines that are only three to four foot deep? The potential for a disaster is very real. Another issue that should be considered by the mayor and council is a health safety issue. Tonight, I brought you a visual. This is what happens when the trains or subways go out. As you can see, they have to jockey several times down Main Mill Street to go onto South Catherine. Now, can you imagine if an emergency vehicle had to get there to someone who was in desperate need of one? I would hate to be that person, because their life might not make it. I think that this council, this is on your table, I think you need to do something about it. Maybe if you can't, maybe the next mayor and council can, but this is an address that you people have to look at. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else care to address us? Not seeing anyone, we'll continue with our regular agenda.
Resolved in accordance with the request therefore the common council approves the city chamberlain to adjust the two thousand sixteen general fund budget by an increase of three thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventy cents, equal to estimated revenue for insurance recovery and to buildings and ground supplies for South Acres Park to recognize the Geico reimbursement for the auto accident damage to the fence repaired by C and E Fencing.
Moved by Councilor Kretzer, second by Councilor O'Connell. Discussion. Councilor Armstrong?
I, I'll address, I'll address my comment at another point.
Okay. Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilor Armstrong?
Yes.
Councilor Kelly?
Yes.
Councilor Dowdell?
Yes.
Councilor O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilor Casper?
Yes.
Councilor Kretzer?
Yes.
Resolved in accordance with the request therefore the common council approves the building inspector to refund twenty dollars to Barbara Gilman for building permit one zero eight four for seventy-seven Bailey Avenue for a fence installation due to her removing her hedge to comply with hedge law.
Moved by Councilor Casper, second by Councilor Dowdell. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilor Armstrong?
Yes.
Councilor Kelly?
Yes.
Councilor Dowdell?
Yes.
Councilor O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilor Casper?
Yes.
Councilor Kretzer?
Yes.
Resolved in accordance with the request therefore the common council approves MLD to write off unpaid final bills from May first, two thousand fifteen, to May thirty-first, two thousand fifteen, in the total amount of eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars and nineteen cents, the percentage of write-offs for this period is point seven seven percent.
Moved by Councilor Dowdell, second by Councilor Kelly. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilor Armstrong?
Yes.
Councilor Kelly?
Yes.
Councilor Dowdell?
Yes.
Councilor O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilor Casper?
Yes.
Councilor Kretzer?
Yes.
Resolved in accordance with the request therefore the common council approves renewing the contract with Plattsburgh Housing Authority for the provision of supplemental police services by a Plattsburgh police officer, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, the total revenue for the city is billed on a monthly basis to cover the cost of our officer.
Moved by Councilor Casper, second by Councilor Dowdell. Discussion.
Yes.
Councilor Kelly.
I was wondering if the amount of money we take in from the Plattsburgh Housing Authority equals the payroll for this officer, or?
For the time spent there, yes.
For the time spent there, okay, okay. How many hours?
Um, I'm not sure of that, and I know the chief is not well today, so he's not here to answer that, but it's, it's not full-time, but it's fairly close to it.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's more than half, I'm sure.
I would, I would just interject, having had contact with not only the, the general population of the Plattsburgh Housing Authority, but the, the senior housing, the presence of that officer is very much appreciated. Am I coming across okay?
Yep.
All right.
I would, I would suggest that you don't lean in, because I think that overloads it a little bit.
Okay, yeah, maybe turn down my volume. Yes, he's been present at meetings I've attended, they have, you know, regular meetings there, at which he is an attendee, I think he's a great liaison person for the youth in that area, so I, I really would like to cast a vote for him, for whoever we choose.
Is there any further discussion? Then you get your chance to cast that vote. Roll call.
Councilor Armstrong?
Yes.
Yes.
Councillor Kelly?
Yes.
Councillor Dowdell?
Yes.
Councillor O'Connell?
Yes.
Councillor Casper?
Yes.
Councillor Crenter?
Yes.
Resolved in accordance with the request-
I'd like to move to a way of the reading of the next, uh-
Moved the motion to a way of the reading by councillor Crenter, second by councillor O'Connell. Um, discussion on the street closures for the Battle of Plattsburgh. Councillor Crenter?
I just wanted to give a huge thank you to Sandra Geddes for, uh, wrangling all of the entities involved and working on all the logistics to make sure that we're able to have a really amazing celebration. So, thank you, Sandra.
You're here.
Councillor Dowdell?
And the merchants along the way, they will be again notified of the closures and-
Yeah, they'll give it, um, an email to all the addresses and, um, I've been making my way through the downtown, it's just the posters and things like that to the talk-
As I suspected. Thank you, okay.
Any further discussion? Roll call?
Councillor Armstrong?
Yes.
Councillor Kelly?
Yes.
Councillor Dowdell?
Yes.
Councillor O'Connell?
Yes.
Councillor Casper?
Yes.
Councillor Crenter?
Yes.
Resolved in accordance with the request therefore the common council approves the city chairman to increase the two thousand sixteen sewer fund budget for the WPCP operations by eighty-two thousand two hundred fifty dollars for unbudgeted costs for various line items for equipment repairs and parts and supplies and contract services.
Moved by councillor Crenter, second by councillor Dowdell. Discussion?
This expenditure, is this in a designated area or is this a citywide expense?
That is at the water pollution control plant, it's in specific-
Okay, can you, all right, okay. Just for, I don't know if you could hear that, Rochelle, it's for specific line items at the water pollution control plant.
Yes, I saw it, dark intention.
Any further discussion? Roll call?
Councillor Armstrong?
Yes.
Councillor Kelly?
Yes.
Councillor Dowdell?
Yes.
Councillor O'Connell?
Yes.
Councillor Casper?
Yes.
Councillor Crenter?
Yes.
Resolved in accordance with the request therefore the common council approves the city chairman to transfer one hundred three thousand nine hundred four dollars between several police department budget items and also increase the use of the general fund appropriate and fund balance in order to cover underbudgeted items related to employee separation costs, contract services, motor vehicle repairs, supplies and printing costs. The effect of this tran- of the transfer between accounts increases the two thousand sixteen general fund budgeted appropriations by ninety-seven thousand two hundred ninety-four dollars.
Moved by councillor Dowdell, second by councillor Casper. Discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I am concerned, uh, with anything that hasn't been budgeted. And I understand we can't control the separation pay. But the other stuff is, uh, you know, if you talked about ten increases with the other stuff, that's half a million dollars that were taken out of general fund. I think, again, when we do this process of budgeting, I think our department heads have to be a little bit more exact and appropriate on what's gonna happen. Because if we keep doing this, that gets us more in deficit. It's just my thoughts.
Councillor Kelly?
I'd like to add that our department heads have been very responsible with the, uh, with the rather tight budgets that we asked them to accept this year. And, uh, I think every department without exception made cuts this year so that we could come in under the tax cap. And, uh, as far as I know, the other departments are doing a fine job of that. I, we haven't had any issues like this so far. And I just stand very concerned that we're allowing one department to exceed its budget when that same department participated in, in creating and revising its own budget. Uh, we, it's at one point last year during the budget season, if I remember correctly, we asked the police department if they could possibly, uh, make some more cuts and a couple of other departments as well, and they agreed to graciously. And, uh, that, that was their decision to do that. And I assume it was done, you know, with, uh, a lot of forethought. But, uh, this one hundred and three thousand dollar expenditure makes us hold for half a year, basically. But there's nothing to say that they won't come back the end of the year and, and ask for the same amount. So we're, two, two hundred thousand dollars that wasn't budgeted out of our general fund is just something we can't afford. It's certainly not sustainable and it makes you wonder, well, can we afford the, the police department that we have, period? So, uh, what I would like to see happen is, I'd like to see, uh, the department head perhaps meet with Mr. Marks and the mayor, see if they can sharpen the pencil a little bit and make this a hundred and three thousand dollars, uh, considerably less than it is now. Otherwise, I don't think I can vote for it. Another thing is, we, we, uh, agreed just a few weeks ago to set up a fund balance policy. And for this year, it seems as though we've been able to actually have a bit of a fund balance. And it's been, it's been very comforting to know that maybe we're on the upswing budget-wise. But, uh, this certainly doesn't help that effort. And therefore I'll be voting against it and I hope, uh, you will join me in doing the same. Thank you.
Further discussion?
Well, that's the point I was trying to get to, Mike. Thank you for clearing that up a little bit.
Thank you.
Because I'm looking at the contracted services, which is, is an additional thirty-one thousand dollars in motor vehicle repairs. And again, I've had a concern about those type of things happening and bidding out and awarding contracts where you can save money here and there. So it's only August and we got four more months to go. And I agree with Mike that we should be a little bit more aware of that. It could happen and we can be a little bit more down by the end of the year. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any further discussion? Roll call?
Councillor Armstrong?
No.
Councillor Kelly?
No.
Councillor Dowdell?
Yes.
Councillor O'Connell?
No.
Councillor Casper?
Yes.
Councillor Crenter?
Yes.
Three to three?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the mayor votes yes to decide the issue.
Resolved in accordance with the request therefore the common council approves the city chairman to revise capital project H five one one zero point five zero, two thousand fifteen street resursicing for the increased cost of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for Fort Brown Drive to be covered by New York State CHIPS funding.
Moved by councillor Crenter, second by councillor Casper. Discussion? Roll call?
Councillor Armstrong?
Yes.
Councillor Kelly?
Yes.
Councillor Dowdell?
Yes.
Councillor O'Connell?
Yes.
Councillor Casper?
Yes.
Councillor Crenter?
Yes.
Resolved in accordance with the request therefore the common council approves the city chairman to revise capital project H five one one zero point five eight, two thousand sixteen Serenac River Trail for the demolition cost of two hundred thousand dollars for the Serenac Street Bridge to be covered by the general fund.
Moved by councillor Kelly, second by councillor Casper. Discussion? No. Roll call?
Councillor Armstrong?
Yes.
Councillor Kelly?
Yes.
Councillor Dowdell?
Yes.
Councillor O'Connell?
Yes.
Councillor Casper?
Yes.
Councillor Crenter?
Yes.
Resolved in accordance with the request therefore the common council approves the ci- city chairman to revise capital project H five one one zero point five seven, two thousand sixteen street resursicing for the increased cost of two hundred ninety-two thousand dollars for Lorraine Street to be covered by the general fund for a hundred ninety-two thousand dollars and the water fund by a hundred thousand dollars.
Moved by councillor Casper, second by councillor Dowdell. Discussion? Roll call?
Councillor Armstrong?
Yes.
Councillor Kelly?
Yes.
Councillor Dowdell?
Yes.
Councillor O'Connell?
Yes.
Councillor Casper?
Yes.
Councillor Crenter?
Yes.
Resolved in accordance with the request therefore the common council approves engineering contract two thousand sixteen dash zero six slash zero seven, two thousand sixteen city street paving Fort Brown and Sandra Avenue be awarded to Luck Brothers for the bid price of four hundred fifty-five thousand three hundred and twelve dollars and thirty-one cents.
Moved by councillor Crenter, second by councillor O'Connell. Discussion? Roll call?
Councillor Armstrong?
Yes.
Councillor Kelly?
Yes.
Councillor Dowdell?
Yes.
Councillor O'Connell?
Yes.
Councillor Casper?
Yes.
Councillor Crenter?
Yes.
Resolved in accordance with the request therefore the common council approves engineering contract two thousand sixteen dash ten Serenac Street Bridge superstructure removal be awarded to Severnson Environmental Services for the bid price of a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars.
Moved by councillor Kelly, second by councillor O'Connell. Discussion? Roll call?
Councillor Armstrong?
Yes.
Councillor Kelly?
Yes.
Councillor Dowdell?
Yes.
Councillor O'Connell?
Yes.
Councillor Casper?
Yes.
Councillor Crenter?
Yes.
Resolved in accordance with the request therefore the common council approves two police department employees to attend two thousand sixteen impact training conference from September twelfth through fourteenth, two thousand sixteen, Saratoga Springs, New York. The total cost will not exceed five hundred sixty-four dollars and will be expensed out of the asset forfeiture fund.
Moved by councillor Crenter, second by councillor Kelly. Discussion? Roll call?
Councillor Armstrong?
Yes.
Councillor Kelly?
Yes.
Councillor Dowdell?
Yes.
Councillor O'Connell?
Yes.
Councillor Casper?
Yes.
Councillor Crenter?
Yes.
Does anyone have anything they'd like to put on for initial consideration at this point? Does anyone have any new business they'd like to raise at this point? Councillor Armstrong?
Yes, thank you. Uh, and, uh, thank you for your announcement concerning the, uh, proposed DRI initial meeting, September fifteenth, I said, I think you said it was?
Yep, yep.
Okay. Uh, I, I, uh, wonder if these meetings will be open to the public?
They will.
Pardon?
They will. They are subject to the open meetings law.
All right, thank you very much.
That's it?
That's it?
That was easy. Now, let me tell you new business.
Yes, I-
Those roll call?
Yes, uh, well, I, I wasn't here the last meeting and I wanted to throw a little bit of information and thoughts that I had regarding the resolution that was approved to go ahead and, and it had to be broken by the mayor. Uh, my vote counted as a no vote because I wasn't here. But I would have been in favor, trying to get my notes here. I would have been in favor of go ahead and, and putting it up for ballot. The issue that was discussed. And then we wouldn't have had the mayor vote that as a tiebreaker. But I was in support of that, just to let you know. I know that it says as a no, but again, I want to emphasize that I am. Couple other things that I'm trying to, uh, get concerns about is, on Bailey Avenue, there are some steps that come down the sidewalk with a rail. And it's in front of eighty-seven and I, I think that's pretty dangerous and something needs to be done with that in case anybody wants to go down with the, with a wheelchair or somebody that's handicapped and can't walk down that.
It's on, it's on Bailey Avenue?
Yes. It's, as you're going up the hill, it's on the left, you can see the rail. Uh, it's been there for, forever. And I think, I think it, it isn't adequate for handicapped accessible people.
Do you go across street in here?
Yes. No, it's going up the hill before you get to Cornelia. It's past Grace-
Between Beekman and- Between Grace, yeah, between Beekman and Grace.
I mean, Beekman.
So it's on the left. Uh, it's a concern. Someone brought that up to me last week and I, and I, I agree with them. You know, it's been there and you're with something that's been there a long time, sometimes you really don't notice it. But I think that needs to be addressed rather quickly so we don't have anything that comes back that would haunt us in the future. So that's just a thought. I have a thought as far as turning off Oak Street and going on to Cornelia. Near the dentist's office, there's a, uh, one spot to park on. But I saw a car having a hard time seeing, turning onto that, heading east because there was an SUV there the other day. And I think that's a concern too. Maybe we oughta just cancel out that spot. I know downtown is hurting for parking spots, but that's a thought too. That maybe somebody can look into that. So... But the last thing I want to talk about is I got a call just a little while ago from a concerned citizen in my ward. And again, back in July, we talked about the skunk problem over near Bailey Avenue. And obviously, I thought a couple of people were gonna come and speak on it tonight. I was hoping they would. And I mentioned that we maybe need to do something and I'm, I'm a little frustrated that really nothing's been done. There's a lot of things individually that I have brought to the table. It's taken a long time, which I understand will happen. But, uh, again, you know, when you get nine skunks in somebody's yard and you trap that, people get all smelling, I mean, just something needs to be done, even if it's temporary. At least we're showing to the area and to our residents that we're making attempt to try to do something. Maybe it might not be the cure-all, but it's an attempt. And I think an attempt from our place in this would really, I think it would at least satisfy temporarily the people that have concerns.
I think, I, I would think that the animal control officer is backed up to the-
Well, I, I, I don't mean, I wasn't referring to the animal control officer. I was conferring, I was referring to maybe at that time, maybe a, a fence or something could go up. Again, I was even making the statement that, that fence might not do anything because they could just burrow underneath. But again, looking at it from my aspect, if I have somebody in my ward that has a concern and I push it on to people and express my concern and it, and it lags a little bit and then they come back to me again and I gotta, yep, I've made, I've made the mention, we've done something. I know we can't do things overnight. But maybe for the future, we can be a little bit more expedient when we do these things. So, I, that, that was a concern and, again, I would address that. I was hoping the concerned citizens would come because you never know, it can happen over in that area. Just a thought. That's all the real new business I have unless I come up with another note that I forgot.
Anyone else have any new business?
I, yeah, I'll, I'll add something. Uh, just in acknowledgement of, uh, Lebron Hicks's concern regarding, um, Wall Street. Uh, I want to express, um, you know, an affirmation, reaffirmation of her concern. Um, it's not a very wide str- a huge vehicle to be going down. I've also heard concerns from constituents who live there. That, um, you know, there are a lot of people who go out to work, uh, along that road and there's no continuous sidewalk that goes down Wall Street to get to places like Mulderite and so forth. So, uh, I, I'd like to make a proposal that that, um, uh, situation be investigated.
Okay. You mean, are you offering a resolution?
Oh.
Or just that, or just asking?
Need to take the form of a resolution?
Well, it depend, it depends on, are you, are you just asking that someone take a look at it or are you proposing?
I, I'm, I'm thinking at a work session that the council might get together with, uh, the related department heads regarding that situation, whether it's city or engineering or whatever, and take an initial look at that for any formal council resolution is taken.
Good. Thank you.
Let me ask, are there any litigation issues surrounding this concern?
Not that I'm aware of. Uh, yeah, uh, s- yes. I mean, Ms. Hicks is, there's active litigation against the city and the, one of the neighboring properties related to some nuisance claims, which part of her claim is related to the truck.
The disk truck?
So it's not necessarily directly against the city for that extent, but yes.
Where are we at then with discussion on it since it is a litigation issue?
The way she presented it tonight, it seemed like a different issue than what was raised in the litigation.
Right.
So I think her focus is on whether or not, initially was whether or not heavy trucks can travel over liquid propane or natural gas lines versus this now traffic concern, which is part of her litigation.
Right. Okay. Liam, councillor Kelly?
That reminds me, uh, speaking of litigation, are you able to speak about where we stand with the, uh, Humana situation and retirees' healthcare at this point?
Um, I can tell you that, uh, there is no update as of yet. I can tell you that there is no update as of yet, the calendar that I think we talked about, that, that the judge had set with discovery set for November and trial some few months after that, is still the current schedule, I'm hoping to have an update on that as early as next week, and I'll definitely get back to you when I do know something, but there really hasn't been much action in the last four or five weeks, you know, visible action.
Thank you, mayor.
Any other new business? I have a couple, actually I have, I have three. One, I'd like to, to first of all, agree with my councillor for Moore and For, and talk about the corner of Oak Street and Cornelia, actually I had a constituent who called me today who said that there seems to be more and more traffic at that corner, and there is a left-turn lane heading east to go onto Oak Street, but there is no left-turn signal, so we asked that we take a look at that to see if that's something that could be done. That's, obviously we'll refer that to an engineering and MLD to take a look at. The, I have to disagree with them however about the skunk problem, the animal control officer has been present quite a bit, is very actively trapping there, and when he investigated the community garden, he did not find any droppings that he identified as a skunk dropping, so he doesn't believe that the community garden is the major source of food, and the, his major concern is the one that we've discussed here a number of times, and people who are actually putting food out intended for one animal that ends up getting eaten by another, and that the skunks are really attracted actually to some of the berries in one of the backyards there as well, so he's trying, you know, to do a really targeted trapping, trying to eliminate the colony so that it doesn't repeat, but yeah, he's, he's working pretty diligently at it. He did, each time he's in the area, he tries to talk to whoever homeowners are home at the time, and has spoken to several, and he has not spoken to all of them. I do know that when I told the police chief that, he said that he would also get police officers over there to have conversations with folks there, I don't believe that's happened yet, but it's planned for the next couple of days, because we want people to understand that there is in fact quite a bit of activity going on, and that, that they're not, they're not alone at this point, they're working on it.
Well, shame on me for not knowing that.
Well, you've been gone to Alaska for a week.
I wish I had known that, I wouldn't have been able to stay there, so, thank you for the update.
Yes, you're welcome. And my third piece of information is, as you may know, Senator Schumer is sponsoring a bill that has to do with cataloging and creating a nationwide database of illnesses that are frequently found among firefighters, and we'll be here tomorrow at the fire station one for a public event about that, and obviously anyone who can attend is invited, and we'll have a very good contingent of our fire department, and I think some of the surrounding ones as well, so make sure everybody's aware that that's going on, and stop by if you can.
Did you say fire station number one or fire station?
One, Cornelia Street, Cornelia Street, it's at 11 o'clock, I'm sorry.
All right.
Yes, it's at 11, thank you.
All right.
Any other new business from anyone? Then this is the second point of the meeting where we invite anyone who cares to share their wisdom with us to address the council, ask you to step to the podium so that we can hear it. Anyone care to address us?